Ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And if we could have, please, a moment of silence for Robert Vickers.
I can barely hear. Can you all hear?
I would like to have a few moments of silence for Robert Vickers and Robert Ponce, Sr., who passed away since our last council meeting. And if we could please have the roll call, Denise.
Councilmember Michael Ponce.
Here, but could you ask Annie to speak into her microphone because we can barely hear her.
I'm just going to eat it. How's that? Is that better?
There you go.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Lisa Lavelle.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cindy Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Annie Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Eusenia De La Rosa will be joining us. She's just going to be a little late. And for your record, we also have Scott Campbell on Zoom.
Great. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have one written communication that was sent to all the council. This was on Monday, February 15th, and is in regards to the letter I read under oral communication at the last city council meeting, ordinance regarding noise and loudspeakers.
Are you having a hard time hearing, Denise?
Yes. If she can get closer.
Get a little closer, too. Okay. If you were sitting up here with me, you'd be able to hear just fine. Okay.
You don't have to wear a mask at home.
What's that?
I don't have to wear a mask at home.
I know, but I miss seeing your face and being next to you. Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Can you hear me? Good? Okay. One item to report out on Correa Mall Phase Two. A virtual community meeting was held on February 6th to review the preliminary site analysis for the second phase of the Correa Mall Terminal Revitalization Project. Approximately 15 community members joined us, joined the project team to review the team's presentation and provide input. The next step is to meet with project stakeholders. Last week, city staff met with the first one, which was the Santa Catalina Island Company, and in the near future, other stakeholders will be scheduled to provide input. After the stakeholder meetings and the input is received, staff will schedule another community meeting to share what was heard and to modify the plan. If a community member wished to schedule a review of the project, please contact me, Bob Greenlaw, the Director of Public Works, at BGreenLaw, B-G-R-E-E-N-L-A-W, at CityofAvalon.com, and I can schedule a in and give you a showing. Any questions?
Just an update as if I know that. Any movement on the Whitley property?
Yes, we're currently going to be redoing the sewer line, and that'll be in the very near future. And then we'll be bringing to council our plans to remodel. Okay, you've already given us authorization to go out to bid, but we want to show a hybrid, how that would be done with a hybrid of some work done by staff members and then some done by contractors so that we can get the best bang for the buck. Okay? Like it was suggested by council.
Great. Just because I'm here and I didn't see before the meeting, that tree that I'm so concerned about right there on Tremont, one of those big boulders that's on that wall is now down on the road.
Okay. We'll take care of that boulder tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Greenlaw? No? And here comes Captain Joe Badali.
Good evening, everyone. Throughout the holiday weekend and Valentine's weekend, we had a high degree and high number of tourism and happy to report that we had one assault only, and that was an isolated incident. And we're very pleased with the high visibility presence that we had throughout the city and was pretty much on events.
Wonderful. Any questions of the captain? Nope? Okay, thank you. Chief Craig?
Hey, excuse me, mayor. I'm getting text messages from the public that we are not broadcasting yet. Do we want to hold for a moment until we can ensure that the public is with us?
Yes, I would think so. Right?
I know it's on Facebook, so I'll have Matt check.
I was able to stream on Channel Three, and I checked on Facebook, and it appears we're streaming on Facebook. I don't know if that's an isolated incident or if I'm missing something, but it looks like we are streaming.
Okay.
You had to touch that for that?
And Chief Craig?
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff. We also saw the uptick in people visiting the island over the weekend and only a handful of problems. The only thing I wanted to quickly mention is we did have a situation a few weeks back with some Sky Lanterns. It was the typical situation. Some people came. They weren't aware that Sky Lanterns weren't allowed. Once they were advised to stop, they just didn't connect the dots with how dangerous they can be depending on the wind conditions. So we keep those flyers posted electronically at the boat, and I'd just like to strongly encourage everyone, just please spread the word whenever you can about Sky Lanterns and how dangerous they can be, and they're certainly not allowed on Catalina Island. With that, that's the only thing I have to report unless there's questions for me.
Questions of our chief?
Chief Craig, would you be able to email us a copy of that digitally? It'd be happy to share it on social.
I'll get you an electronic copy, absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And our harbor master?
Good evening, Orin Karstafen, harbor master. It was very nice to see the busier weekend. For the harbor, we went into the President's Day weekend with small craft advisory in effect for the winds out of the west, hazardous season in the San Pedro Channel. Saturday evening, the small craft advisory was elevated to a gale forecast for winds 20 to 30, gusts of 35, all out of the west, so that's good for the harbor. It did put a damper on the visiting boaters, unfortunately. Arrivals were down quite a bit. This continued through the weekend. Small craft advisory actually remains in effect through tonight. Westernly winds will continue, at least until tomorrow, and then I'm happy to report we had no incidents with anchored or moored vessels. Notably busier was the mole transportation hub with added boats. We saw a lot of activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of our harbor master? I guess not. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As we're talking about visitor counts, staff with the Recreation Department, we're pushing ourselves out to July 4th and kind of thinking ahead there. Just a couple announcements there. Still really too early to know exactly what we're going to be doing for July 4th, but we do need to start making some plans. We are considering just using last year's theme, which was Avalon Beautiful, Catalina Strong. So if everybody was okay with that, if you've got some thoughts on that, you want to shoot me an email, I'd be more than happy to take those under advisement. We've also been in contact with our provider for the fireworks show, expo shows, as well as the person that's doing the donations, still on board to do a donation for the show. The talk is even bigger than, you know, looking for a bigger barge, looking for more fireworks. So if we're going to have a show, it's looking like it's going to be bigger and better than what we've seen in years past. So we're hopeful that that's the case. In terms of the parade, again, too early to tell exactly what's going to happen. We could do, you know, if county is at a place where we can have a parade down Front Street, we'll certainly look towards that. If we need to do something that's more spread out, we could do something up and down the streets of Avalon. So there's some options there. One of the things we did do, though, is we needed to make arrangements for the marching band. You know, they're 80-plus strong and take 40 to 50 hotel rooms. And so we made the decision, just with, as much as we know now that we've canceled them for this year, we'll certainly look towards them for next year, but still planning on a parade and more to come on that. So with that, any questions?
I have one question for you, Dan. If I understood correctly, regardless of how the parade or if the parade goes through, we are going to do a fireworks show, correct?
No. Fireworks show, we certainly can do. I think we need to talk amongst ourselves and staff, look at county protocols as we get closer to it and bring it up to council. But as of right now, the person that's looking to provide it is still committed to doing that for this year, and we just need to, I think, as we get a little further into it, see what it looks like just for the community and the safety of the community.
So what is the date? Last year, we had a final date that we had to make a decision by. What is that date for this year?
That's a great question.
In order to secure the barge?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I reached out to them last week. I haven't heard back to kind of get that date. Last I spoke to him, just because of everything that took place last year, they've got plenty of product. My guess it'll be, you know, April, mid-April, and I will find out and let the council know as soon as I do.
Okay. And finally, on this subject, I just want to make sure that the council is involved in that decision. If the decision is to cancel, then I would like to make sure that the council's involved and has a conversation about it.
I'll report out at the next meeting what our drop dead date is for that, and certainly we'll make sure that they're involved in that decision.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael Palmer, did you want to talk about anything?
I have no updates.
Okay. And here comes our finance director and AV guy.
Just wanted to provide counsel with an update on the status of federal relief aid with respect to state and local assistance. On Wednesday of last week, February 10th, I received an update from Townsend about the next relief package, which is currently under discussion at the House. The House Oversight and Reform Committee released its draft, which includes $350 billion to state and local governments. That amount is split 60-40 between state and local governments, and the local government portion is further split 50-50 between cities and counties using a modified CDBG formula. Under the language as proposed, Avalon would be eligible to receive between $687,000 and $827,000. To put that into context, our visitor-driven tax revenues and fees were down 4.6 million through December of 2020 compared to 2019. I did speak with somewhat a representative of Congressman Lowenthal's office on Thursday morning about the city's current financial situation as well as the proposed aid. In that meeting, I brought up that the proposed allocation did not provide any consideration for the actual losses sustained and that the pandemic has not impacted all cities equally. To demonstrate this, I also provided the congressman's aide with a presentation, which I'm going to share right now. What this table attempts to demonstrate is that the losses sustained across cities in the California 47th District haven't been sustained equally across all cities, and that the using of the modified CDBG formula as the basis for revenue loss does not equitably recognize Avalon and its impact with regards to the pandemic. And so just to kind of go over the table and explain how I came up with these numbers so council is aware, going from left to right, I have the general revenues in Avalon as of June 30, 2020, so that was the fiscal year '20 audit that we just finalized in January. As you can see, the general revenues are the, generally speaking, the tax revenues that a city receives that aren't designated for a particular purpose. So in Avalon's case, TOT and sales tax makes up about two-thirds of that number. Comparing our fiscal year '20 general revenues to fiscal year '19, we were down 1.5 million. Again, this is only looking at tax revenues and only looking at the period through June 30th of 2020, so it would not consider things like cross-channel warfage or cruise ship warfage in that $1.5 million figure. As you can see that as you can see, that $1.5 million figure represents 15% of our general revenues in fiscal year '19. Under the current proposed allocation, the city would be able to recoup less than half of its tax revenue losses from the first three months of the pandemic. If you were to compare those with other cities in the 47th District, and not to pick on these cities, I could pick cities pretty much anywhere in Southern California, and it was showing me the similar results, that the impact of COVID as a percentage of their general revenues wasn't to the same level that the city sustained. So the highest level would be Westminster, with 4.2% of its general revenues were down for fiscal year '20. And then again, based on the current proposed allocation, based on a CDBG funding formula, those cities would receive between 9 and 40 times the amount lost over that three-month period. And again, Avalon would receive less than half of its amount lost over that three-month period. Not suggesting those cities aren't worthy, I'm just suggesting the current formula as it's proposed in the bill does not provide for, or consideration for, the true impact of the pandemic on a tourist destination that is more dependent on visitor-driven tax revenues such as Avalon. In this, after discussing with the representative of Congressman Lowenthal, the city staff drafted a letter outlining our position, including this table. In that letter, we also request that they consider actual lost revenues somehow in the determination of aid availability. We also highlight in the letter that even excluding this table, we have millions in losses from our Harbor Enterprise Fund that also serves a public safety role in our community, and that the expenditure reduction we've already implemented in the harbor couldn't be done to the level to operate within revenues this year without putting in jeopardy public safety. So we drafted that letter, which was signed by the city manager and the mayor, and sent it to Congressman Lowenthal last week, and we're hoping to hear back, and hopefully this impacts the decision-making process and that aid can be allocated more fairly with consideration for actual lost revenues rather than a modified CDBG formula as currently proposed. So with that, I wanted to see if anyone had any questions?
Matt, the only question I had was if it would be beneficial to have other entities offer letters in support of the same claim, whether that is any businesses, any other members of the community?
I don't see how it would hurt. I don't know if I can be in a position to advocate for that, but I definitely do not believe the current allocation helps Avalon, and so if someone were, felt so moved, I don't see how it could hurt our cause if people, if they shared the feelings of the city that they relayed that information.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Is there a city manager report?
I just wanted to thank Matt because he did draft that letter and got it all organized that day and made sure that he went down to the mayor's house and got her signature, and he got it off Thursday night to Lowenthal's office, and a hard copy was put in the mail. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that Matt drafted that letter.
Yeah.
And then I just want to remind the public about vehicle registration, which is Monday through Thursday from 8:00 AM to 12:00, and then 1:00 to 5:00 PM every day, Monday through Thursday, is commuter subsidy, and you need to make a reservation for that. So just call the front desk, and we'll put you down in a time slot.
Great. Thank you. Speak up.
I have no report.
I just have that I will be attending Lake of California City's Mayor and Council Members Roundtable tomorrow after I get my second vaccine. Hopefully, I'm not sick, chilled, whatever. And then I will also be attending the Contract Cities Board Meeting tomorrow night.
Great. Thank you. Lisa?
I'll be attending the Island Connectivity Group meeting tomorrow, and we'll hopefully have additional updates at the next council meeting regarding that.
Great. Thank you. And I believe, Lisa, that Devin was going to be sending some information about the metro vote on Thursday. I see you shaking your head. Yes, that's great. And we can talk after the meeting if you want. Okay? And, okay, thank you. As you all know, the underwater cleanup will be taking place virtually this Saturday, the 20th. So I know everybody enjoys going down there and seeing all the wonderful things they bring up from the inner harbor, but anyway, they will, they're not calling this the 40th, they're calling it the virtual underwater cleanup, and the 40th will be held next year, and I believe, she said, Jill Bovin, the organizer, on February 26th. So we're glad they're coming back, and they do a lot of good in our harbor. And there was, I'm sure you all got some information about the junior lifeguard program. Supervisor Hahn had gotten about 700 requests to get that junior lifeguard program back and running for the summer. I know it's personally something that I support, and we did not have that last year. So I don't know if we have to buy in to say, hey, put us on the list because we really want the program back here as well, as long as the protocols can be met and that kind of thing. So I don't know, Dan, if Dan has had any conversations with anybody about that as well, but...
I did speak with Steve Powell last week in regards to it, just to kind of find out where we stood, if we need to gear up towards providing a program. They felt like they're about a month away from making a final decision. There's been a push to, yeah, keep it open, but it's probably about mid-March before they'll know for sure. They typically use spring break, their spring breaks as the time the kids come out and test, pools are open and test, so they need to do something here fairly quick if they're going to do it during spring break.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. And again, I know we're all giving shout-outs to the clinic, to Jason Paray and the hospital staff. They're now testing, I think it was at 16 or 18-year-olds and up. There's a standby system at Pejo Machado Field, but they seem to be, they're doing an incredible job, and so people that have homes from the mainland or have homes here that also reside on the mainland, if they take some, a document up to show that they have a home here, they're also getting tested. So thank you, Jason, and your staff for a wonderful job, and some of us will see you up there tomorrow. Okay, that's all I have. Oral communication?
Not tested, I mean vaccinated.
Oh, I'm sorry, when I say test? Did I say test? Okay.
Eighteen, eighteen. Eighteen and up.
Oh, eighteen and up. Yes, thank you. Okay. Oral communication. This is where members of the public may speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. Anybody out there, captain?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Consent calendar.
I, oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have three comments, two for general business, or general comments, and then one regarding item number four on consent.
Okay.
And just before I read the first one of two comments under this, I just wanted to give everyone an update. We verified that the service is streaming on Channel Three as well as Facebook, although we're having some issues, and we're trying to work through it on streaming on the city website. So if you're trying to stream it on the city website, please go to City of Avalon forward slash, I mean, please go to our Facebook page or on Channel Three instead.
Thank you.
So the first comment I have is from Jim Lutjehan. He writes, "Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, on behalf of Love Catalina, the Catalina Island Tourism Authority, we would like to share that the council discussion regarding a possible increase of TOT via ballot initiative is an area of great interest to us as it impacts visitor-driven revenues and recent efforts towards the formation of a T-Bid or Tourism Business Improvement District on Catalina Island. The TOT T-Bid Committee was formed about a year ago to provide input and support along these lines and would very much like to be a partner as this initiative is developed. Due to expiring terms and elections, the prior council appointments to that committee have now been replaced by city staff members Matt Baker and Devin Hart, and we would welcome having the rest of the committee be a part of the discussion on a ballot initiative. Through a partnership with the City of Avalon, we can be sure that the best combination of TOT and T-Bid funding can be put into place in a mutually beneficial way. Striking the right balance and pass-through fees and taxes is extremely important to our business community. The destination marketing efforts of the Tourism Authority have historically brought an estimated $9 to $10 in tourism-generated revenue, or fees and taxes, to the City of Avalon for every dollar invested. As we have demonstrated, our ability to pivot with examples like Love Catalina rebranding, work plan, and new marketing plan can and will bring in even higher return. However, we must grow those funds dedicated to doing so. Our competitive destinations outspend us by multiple millions of dollars each year, and just being open is not enough to rebuild the reserves needed to the city and the Tourism Authority in order to have both a well-marketed destination and a well-funded city government. Catalina will continue to benefit from a destination marketing organization that evolves regarding recovery, just as we have in response to COVID-19. Thank you for the opportunity to be a partner to the solution." The second comment that I have is also from Jim Lutjehan. He writes, "On behalf of the Avalon Rotary, we would like to thank the city staff and community members who joined in the latest community cleanup event held last Saturday. We will be holding cleanups throughout 2021 and invite all interested community members to join us in caring for Catalina by keeping trash out of our public areas and out of the ocean. Please make a daily effort to be mindful of where your waste products are going and by being a good steward of the place in which we live by not littering, cleaning up after pets, and using designated waste receptacles located throughout the town of Avalon and in the island's interior. The next cleanup event will be held March 13, 2021, at 9:00 AM, beginning in Avalon's Kids Park." And that's all the comment I have.
Consent calendar?
The agenda shows there are four items on the consent calendar, but we are removing item number four, which I think Michael just said we had oral communication on that item.
That's correct.
So item number one is minutes from the February 2nd to 2020 regular city council meeting. Two is warrants for a total expenditure of $572,558.74 for the time period of January 25th through February 5th of 2021. Three is grant funding application to the California Division of Boating and Waterways, and we're asking council to adopt a resolution authorizing the application of grant funds from the California Division of Boating and Waterways for the public beach restoration program, and authorize the city manager or their designee to be the authorized signature on the grant application.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through three.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded. I just, for the audience, this project would include dredging and sand replacement in our harbor, so, which is something I think we're, we definitely want to see and have happen, so. Okay, there's been moved, motion and a second? Call for the vote?
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
Okay. And we will, the record will reflect that Councilmember De La Rosa hasn't joined us yet.
And is there a reason why we're pulling item number four?
Yes, something was brought to our attention today, possibly another member of the council working
And is there a reason why we're pulling item number four?
Uh, yes, something was brought to our attention today, possibly, uh, another member of the council working, just starting to do something with broadband, so we want to join the efforts together and figure out what we're really bringing to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Item number five.
Okay. Okay, item five is the operation of the Avalon Fuel Dock Facility. Um, I just want to hit upon a few things that are, are in the staff report. The first one, uh, that's most important is that the fuel dock is, has an approximate $250,000 draw on the harbor fund annually. And on September 15 of 2020, we did bring this before the council to ask permission to go out for an RFP, which we did, and our main thing is just to ensure the continuity and the reliability of a fuel source to our boating community. The RFP was released on November 3rd, and there was an optional, um, onsite walkthrough, which was on November 17. We only had one respondent that attended. The, uh, deadline for the RFP was January 14 at 4:00 PM. We received two proposals by that deadline, and they were from Deion &amp; Sons Incorporated and Maxim Petroleum. And before I go any further, I believe that Matt and Madison Cullen from Deion &amp; Sons was going to zoom in, so if we had some questions, we would be able to ask them that. Uh, let's see, I've, um, and then, uh, there was a panel, uh, committee that interviewed those two applicants on February 5th. It was unanimous that we chose, uh, Deion &amp; Sons. There will not be a lease, but we did propose in our RFP that there's a trust fund for any future, uh, capital improvement and maintenance of our facility. The things that we really looked for was their business plan and their approach, the equipment they'd be using, their experience, reputation, and benefits to the city. And so our recommendation to the city council, I'm sorry, is to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Deion &amp; Sons for the operation of the Avalon Fuel Dock Facility, including construction and operation of a restaurant, and that the city council waive any irregularities to the proposal.
Do we have any comments from the public? Do we need a motion? Um, I'll make a, if no other comments, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Deion &amp; Sons for the operation of the Avalon Fuel Dock Facility.
I'll second.
And I have a question. So in the proposal, we, is this what's going to be negotiated, like the number of months to be open, and hours, and things like that?
Nothing to add, but an agreement with that?
That's correct, Mayor, so we'll fine-tune it and put all the stuff that's pertinent in there to cover ourselves and to cover Deion &amp; Sons.
Okay.
And I just want to ask, uh, Mayor Protem Cassidy to just include the rest of that, and that's including construction and operation of a restaurant, and that the city council waive any irregularities of the proposal.
Do we need to call for the vote?
Yes, but I wanted to make sure that that whole thing was in your motion.
Is any of my, not working?
I'm not speaking right now?
Yep, it's not working.
Cannot hear me?
Now, yes.
We can hear you now.
Okay. So all Denise was saying was just add on that other part about the restaurant facility as well, not just the fuel dock.
Oh, I'm sorry, here, let me back up. Um, oh, okay, uh, I'm sorry, let me amend my motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and, uh, Deion &amp; Sons for the operation of the Avalon Fuel Dock Facility, including construction and operation of a restaurant, and that the city council waive any irregularities in the proposal.
And I will resecond.
It moved and seconded. Do we have any comments, Michael Palmer?
I have no comments.
Okay, call for the vote?
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
So for the record, we have four eyes, and there will be one absence reflected in the record of Council, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Item number six?
Okay, item six is a discussion regarding the autoet vehicle lengths in Avalon Municipal Code. Okay, as we noted earlier, the vehicle season is February 1st through April 1st of this The whole purpose of tonight's discussion is to give direction to staff on how to proceed forward with the golf carts, or autowets, whatever you want to call them, are out on our streets that are over the length of our municipal code. So this, uh, slide just shows that currently our autowets that are allowed, which is our normal golf cart, is supposed to have an, uh, no overall length of over 120 inches and 55 inches wide. Matt, can you change it by, it's not responding. In 2010, we changed the municipal code or adjusted it, and that was for low-speed vehicles and neighborhood electric vehicles, and it has a length of 38 inches, so we increased it an additional 18 inches, and we increased the width of the vehicles to 67 inches or less. And that was measured the widest part of the vehicle, but not including the mirrors and door handles. A lot of people are under the assumption that that includes an electric golf cart, but that is not the case. These are different vehicles. So we chose the three, uh, most familiar vehicles that you see autowets on the streets, so we are covering the Easy Go, the Club Car, and the Yamaha. And here's a list of all the current golf carts for Easy Go, and the ones highlighted in red, which hold six passengers, which is the whole thing with the, the limos mainly, and I'll keep using that term limo, because those are the golf carts or autowets that are facing two seats facing forward. You can see that the, uh, Easy Go had anywhere from 135.8 to 141.5. Here's a picture, we've seen one of these on our streets, and it has the six passenger, the, the two facing forward and the one facing back. And what adds the additional length is that, uh, step, uh, platform on the back, which you need for stability and for a person getting in and out of the golf cart. And those are 141.5. Here's another one, uh, that's a six passenger, and it's 135.8 inches. The Club Car has two that are over the 120 inches, and one is 144, and the other, two, both of them, I'm sorry, are both 144 inches in length. Here's one of the Club Cars. Just two seats facing forward is 128 inches, and I do want to note that the City of Avalon, we have one, uh, limo-sized Yamaha golf cart that is one of, it's 128 inches also. And we purchased that back in, point, 2005, I believe. So then the golf cart, the Yamaha ones, here's two of them that are over the length, and the Concierge 4, which is 128 inches, then, uh, the one that's, uh, the Concierge 6, and it's 161.5 inches in length. That's the regular one. And then this one is the four plus the two seats in the rear, which adds that additional 18 inches. There is one that's three, I'm not sure if we have one of these on the streets, I think one of the hotels had gone to the vehicle hearing, and they, uh, went through the vehicle hearing review, and they were allowed this, which is 161 inches. That's almost the 200 inches of our full-size vehicle. Okay, that, my next slides are just gonna show you the difference in the length, so this obviously is the longest one at 161 inches. And then when you put an Easy Go with the, uh, 18-inch step on the back, it's almost that 141 inches, or 161 inches, I'm sorry. Is there a way to bring that down any, I wonder? And then this one also, I have the lengths at the top of that screen, but I can't read it right now. It also has, so we're just trying to compare the different sizes of the body, and then you add the additional step on the back, and how the length increases so drastically. And here's our Yamaha, and if you're wondering why the spelling the way it is, we had to reverse the picture, so the spelling's backwards. And that's just your normal limo at 128 inches, so you can see the big difference with the one in the far back, being 161 inches. So tonight, I just wanted to talk to you about some possible options, and one of them is just to allow the current autowets are on the streets, which we're doing for the last nine days of issuing, uh, vehicle stickers, uh, just a temporary, so that they're, uh, legal on the streets until we can figure out what we're doing. So one of your options is to continue that way, and then permit that those that are on our streets already for a period of one year, while we, the city, determines exactly how many of those vehicles, um, are on our streets and that don't, uh, currently meet our autowet definition. And after we gather all that data, we can come back to the city council to determine what our next steps would be, whether it's 20%, 30%, or whatever the number is. Now, we can amend the municipal code to redefine the length of an autowet. Oh, I'm sorry, I want to go back to 1B, please, I've, I skipped over that, and that is, if we were to continue to, uh, allow those vehicles on the street, then we, we should not allow any brand-new ones to come, because it would just further complicate it down the road. We can amend the municipal code, and number, choice number three is to maintain the municipal definition of autowet and require all autowets that do not qualify for the low-speed vehicle, neighborhood electric vehicle length exemption to be removed or otherwise be deemed illegal under the municipal code. Number four is to require any new autowets over 120 inches to go to the vehicle hearing officer for a review of their case. And just for knowledge that to go to the vehicle hearing officer, it's $58, but I would really like to see that broken down per applicant and what it charges, what it costs the city for that, uh, lawyer to come over and hear and do this hearing. But currently, it's $58, and if it's only 15 minutes, then it might cover any, uh, mayor. So we are just looking for direction on how to get us through this vehicle season, and any changes that you might want to make to the code. And if you can think of any other options, I would love to hear them.
I'll go first. I'm good with options one with A and B.
Say again, one and B.
On, um, anything new coming to the island?
Michael, I'm sorry, can you, can you say that first part, um, option one, the, on the potential solutions, correct?
Correct. I mean, I think, I think we need to kind of put the brakes on it, see where we're at, to what we've got, um, because I, I understand that I'm at a compliance, so, um, I would rather us just put a stop on what we, where we're at right now and not allow anything new to get a temporary permit, because that just, that'll just open a can of worms. Um, so I would, I'd be good with option one with, with A and B.
I have a question, kind of logistically, on that. So, if I've already ordered one, so we say, you know, or, I mean, some people have probably, not me, but some people have already ordered them, so let's say we, we stopped it effective, we'd have to come back and do something more formal, right?
Yes, when I spoke to Mike King about three months ago, he did say that orders had been placed, so I'm not sure if deposits have been, or, but if, yes, he has ordered ones that are lo- much longer than the 120 inches, so I don't know what we would do with those if people have already invested money in them.
And, and to add to that, let's say I live, I don't live here all the time, let's say I live at, not picking on Hamilton Cove, but, and I buy mine over town, and I've got it o- ordered over town. I, I just don't, I'm not saying I'm not agreeing, Michael, I'm just saying, how do we, where do we put the halt, and how do we get the word out, and they go, well, we haven't heard, and...
But the thing is, Annie, we, we here know that it's 120. Um, somewhere along the line, it got to where we're at right now, but we know, and if somebody's gonna be going and getting a six-seater golf cart, they've gotta know that it's over 120. You know, i- if you're gonna bring a vehicle over here, you should know what the parameters are.
I'm not saying I don't, I'm not saying I don't...
I know, I know, I'm, but...
I know. Well, it's just like I thought people should know about the CUPs, and they didn't know either, so. Hey, Essenyah!
Hi, Juan, sorry, I'm a little late here.
It's okay, welcome back.
I'm eight is.
That's all right. So, okay, let me ask another, just a logistical question. So I know someone's got one of the big ones, but they put their blue sticker on the golf cart, and there's kind of like, so I'm cool, because I just, I have my vehicle sticker on there, is that, would be cool? I'm just asking.
Scott Campbell? I think that's more than fair.
Where's Scott? That's a question for Scott, Annie, I, because I, I don't want to give an answer on that without verification from legal.
Right, right. Because we're doing, we're allowing that right now, which I personally don't have a problem with it either, and that's one less vehicle on the road, because they could put it on, uh, something else and then still have a golf cart. So the golf cart is meeting, the bigger golf cart is meeting their needs, which is nice. But where is Scott Campbell?
Michael's gonna text him for us. While we're waiting for that answer, do you, oh, there you are, Scott.
Yes, what was the question? I'm sorry, I can barely hear, so I've got the speaker up to my phone.
Oh, it looks like you're talking out of a shoe phone. So, so the ques- the legal question is, look at this, it looks so funny. Anyway, uh, the legal question is, so, so may I use, so, so if I have a, a golf cart that's oversized, and right now, if we said, okay, you have to have a special temporary, but then the person says, no, but I have a blue sticker, so I want to put my blue sticker on there, is, I'm hoping there's no problem with that, but is there any, what do you think?
So Scott, the blue sticker is for a full-size vehicle?
Right, yeah, I don't think that there's a problem with designating your oversized golf cart, as long as that's your blue sticker car, and you don't have another vehicle.
Okay, great, good, because I think that's what the, that's what they're doing, but I'm, so, that's good news. Okay, that's one thing out of the way. Okay, Lisa, do you, Essenyah, do you have a comment, or?
Grand, just a couple of questions. I, um, I think for this year, moving ahead with who is already on the island, allowing a special temporary permit, I think there needs to be some allowance, although, what is the expiration date? It's the, uh, April 1st, right? Was the expiration date for being able to get for this year for the vehicle code?
That is correct, without getting a...
So, I think that anyone that has already purchased or has one on plan to purchase would need to have proof of that in writing by April 1st to receive the permit. Anyone after April 1st would not be able to get a temporary permit under this category until next year, and would not be able to bring them over, it would be considered not allowed in the municipal code, right?
That makes sense to me.
Until next February, when we, once this is decided, and we figure out what we're doing with the actual code itself.
And then they just have to show us when they ordered it.
If that's the date, we could do that. The issue is to make certain that people that have these temporary permits understand that they are only temporary, and they may be revoked if, when you make a final decision on this, you decide to keep it at 120.
Okay.
But realistically...
And then, just the bigger question, um, which I know we'll probably get to coming up soon, and knowing kind of the discussion that I had today... and knowing kind of the discussion that I had today of, you know, for every vehicle that's over the 120 inches, how many parking spots do we lose? Does it, are we defeating ourselves by limiting the length of a vehicle, knowing that vehicle lengths and/or widths have changed repeatedly, even in just the last 20 years? Are the smaller vehicles going away? Will they be harder to get and only on golf courses? Are the larger vehicles going to become the norm? Do we need to address the autoet code for more than just vehicle length? Looking at neighborhood vehicles, low-speed vehicles, and/or, you know, setting aside the wider lengths for microcars right now? But if the goal is to try to get newer model vehicles that are cleaner, that are less noisy, does it make sense to look at what those allowances could be and how having vehicles of a certain length, longer than what we've agreed to right now, potentially make the town ultimately better in terms of noise quality, air quality, and not necessarily take away significantly, depending on how many numbers, what the numbers are, that would be caused by longer vehicles? I think in certain areas that are highly impacted, that it makes sense to, you know, put a limit on how many per neighborhood perhaps can actually be agreed upon. And if you want to get a longer autoet, then you have to go on a way the most likely do for a vehicle. But, you know, I don't know if having vehicles that are that much longer in most places are going to cause issues. It may require us to look at, looking at how parking is set up and one-way streets for certain parking, which is part of the general plan that we should be looking at anyway. So just throwing all that out there for discussion or not.
No, that's a lot to throw out. I agree with you.
You're welcome.
And, and, you know, and then the whole kicking thing, kicking the can down the road, you know, here we go again, something that is going to take a year. And I guess we have to, the questions that you're asking need to be answered, I think, before we can decide which way we're going to kick the can.
Right. I mean, I prefer not to kick the can. I'd prefer not to cause people to have loss of a vehicle that they've invested a significant amount of money and I think is my biggest concern right now, especially this year for everybody. Which is where I think, you know, approving it for this year makes sense.
But Lisa, I just want to throw out that I agree with Councilmember Ponce and the fact that, you know, we know what the rules are. If you're going to order a vehicle, you're taking a risk. It's no different than the whole situation that prior council was under with the electric smart cars. It was the same thing. There was a handful or maybe even a dozen or so people who wanted to go for the next generation of the smart cars and the council said no. So it, you know, it's kind of, you know, it's a tough situation because, you know, people have invested, but, I mean, we have these ordinances on the books. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting it was a smart move to invest without this conversation happening before the investments happen. So I don't feel that it's the council's responsibility to make those investments whole. I think the council needs to take that out of the equation and not make a decision based on that, the politics of that, but to make a decision on what is best for the city.
How many vehicles over 120 inches have already been approved, though?
That's a great question.
I'm just giving approximation, okay? They are trying to keep track of it. We, in the nine days that we've been open from 8 to 12 for vehicle registration, we've registered a little over 200 of them and maybe 25 of them so far.
So 10%-ish is a fairly significant number and have already been given registration for this year, right?
Little over 200 vehicle registrations of autoettes is not very large. We have.
Okay.
Well, then, then a question or something else in the equation is the golf cart rental places that have the limos, right? Then the resale of those to locals, do we perpetuate that as well? To say, you know, they've got permission to have the limo, but are depending, are we going to wait a whole year to say you can or cannot sell those 180-plus-inch ones to residents of Avalon? Just a question. Versus just trying to get them off the island?
Right.
I know, I know they're, they're a less expensive vehicle for people and to go over, you know, and try to buy a new one, I understand that. But then, you also have to always deal with the maintenance issue that, it's difficult to deal with the maintenance issue when you get these golf carts and they're 20 years old and people don't maintain them. I think that's, that's one of my biggest problems, is the noise and the smell from the ones that aren't maintained.
Right. Once that goes back to, you know, I mean, if you had 10 of these oversized vehicles, you would lose, and correct me if I'm wrong on the math, but I was talking with Devin earlier today. If you have 10 of these vehicles that are greater than 120 inches, for every 10 of those vehicles ranging from 128 inches up to 161, I think was the maximum size, for every 10 of those approved, you would lose anywhere from one up to about four parking spots in a length-wise parking situation. So I think of like Whitley or DeSconso. In a diagonal parking situation of in front of like Long's or, you know, in front of the post office on the metro side, that doesn't actually take away parking spots for the majority of the autoet parking that is there. It forces them out into the street a little further, but the streets that have that type of parking have, not that we want to go there, but they have some flexibility in being able to accommodate that. The vehicles that drive on that street are still able to pass too wide without having an issue there. So again, is the, I'm not sure right now with what we're looking at, is it better for us to have longer vehicles, potentially for people that are newer and better maintained and have parts that can be fixed well and done well? Right now, instead of trying to have people hold on to very short golf carts that are also extremely noise and potentially extremely noisy and polluting.
Lisa, since we already, we have numerous of the small, old, dirty golf carts, I don't see that happening. I don't see somebody just going and getting rid of that dirty, unmaintained golf cart and just going and getting a new one.
Right.
And, and to a lot of them, it's the cost of having to buy a new one, which I understand, but I just don't see, I don't see that happening.
And we saw that when we did the noise ordinance work as well, that some of those old two-stroke golf carts, you know, they're still on the street. So we have tried and seen that and it hasn't changed.
And well, that would be a level of enforcement, not necessarily that it hasn't changed yet, right?
And that is.
We haven't gone back and done noise testing again since the first time.
Yeah, at what point do we want to make the change, though? Because I don't think that we can't like let it keep happening. It seems like we're starting to contribute to the problem, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we need to, what I would like to say is to do is to put a more, you know, put a stop on it right now. Let us discuss where we want to go with this and continue the discussion. But I think we need to, to not allow more to come or more to be bought that just makes this more difficult. It's, it's a good thing that this has come up and now we can fix it. So, but that's, that's how I feel, is that we need to, we really need to take a look at it and come up with some, some good solutions.
I'd like to ask a question about solutions and information. Is there not available now new golf carts that are less than 120 inches? Is that why people are buying them larger?
No. They're buying them because they're six-seaters.
And they're really fancy.
I'm just asking, if people wanted to follow the municipal code, are there new golf carts out there that comply with the municipal code?
Yes.
Sizes?
Yes.
Good question.
But if you have a four-seater golf cart.
Because if there are, then the question is, why are people buying golf carts that they know or should know are in violation of our municipal code?
Well, I'll give you, there are smaller golf carts available and it, and it is just a personal choice.
There is an advantage to having a four-seater golf cart with two seats facing forward versus one forward and one back. If you have elderly people or it's harder to get on that back step, to step up for the people that are facing backwards, I can see why people would want the two facing forward and those are eight inches over.
Well, and also, some people have larger families. And so they need to be able to fit six people. But I don't know, the people that are buying the big monster trucks, the big monster ones now, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, if you got it, flaunt it, you know? Why would I have a, you know, I'm not driving a convertible Porsche down the streets of Avalon, but maybe if I could afford it, I would, because it's a smaller vehicle. So it's, it's, you know, it's, some people like fancy and they're, and they have the money to spend $30,000 or more on a golf cart.
I mean, I understand the necessity of it because myself, I'm going to need it eventually having more kids, but it's between trying to find the balance of, you know, of not contributing to the air quality problem, but trying to fix it.
Well, and the other thing, we have things on the books, only to be enforced by law enforcement because code, as you all know, cannot stop a moving vehicle. So the LA County sheriffs, it would be wonderful if they would participate, you know, and not bust a golf cart that's going up Whitley or Marilla because we know it, you know, but when they are just so loud, just going down the front street or going down on our, on our level streets and if they see smoke and stuff coming out of the back, I mean, something, they can be ticketed. We can do, we can then do the sound thing on them and have them, give them a citation to fix it. But, and maybe moving forward, we will have that assistance from law enforcement because I think once, like everything else, once that gets out a little bit that, hey, you need to maintain this. I mean, you couldn't drive a cart on the mainland in bad shape like these golf carts are comparably. I mean, you don't see junkers on the road. You really don't see a lot of junkers on the road, on the mainland. And so why we're allowing it to be something that's less to fix, you know, maybe we should work with the schools to have somebody figure out how to do golf cart mechanicking because it's not that big a deal compared to working on a vehicle with computers and all of that kind of stuff, you know? Maybe we can try to work out a solution to help that way as well. So, so far, Michael, option A and B, has that seemed to be a consensus?
I think so.
Tell me yes, please.
Okay. So do the temporary. And if we want to talk about, do we want to also include something about no resale of big ones so that we don't perpetuate the problem or? Cindy's shaking her head.
Is there a way to maybe say like find an alternative? Or is it just better just, right now, just do a no-sell, a no-resale?
I don't know. I'm throwing it out there.
I'm assuming that.
Well, I think the point is to not continue these larger permits. If that's, if we're not changing the vehicle code, then unfortunately, those permits were given out to oversized vehicles and it's not right to take them back. So giving the temporary permits for now, but I would agree with not being able to resell those carts because that's not the size that we want in town. So I think that's what, what we're asking, or that's the comment about not being able to resell them. I mean, certainly you could sell them off island.
Okay, but let me.
Do we know?
Go ahead, Lisa.
I was just going to ask, do we know out of the 25 that have already been permitted for this year, if all of those 25 were here last year, is one got permitted already?
That would be correct. They were already registered on the streets.
Okay.
And I am assuming that anybody that's paid for a golf cart to come this way, whether it's the rentals or people that have purchased them themselves from one of our current dealers in town, that they paid a round trip, just like you do a full-size vehicle. So it shouldn't be a problem to have them removed off the island.
And we know, do we know, do we know how many 141-inchers we have?
Not yet, Mayor. That's, that's why we would.
That's, okay, okay, okay. And hopefully we don't have any 161-inches. I don't think.
Yes, we do.
There are most.
Yes, we do.
I believe so, yes, Mayor. We have some.
Some, oh, okay, okay.
I'm just curious also, do we have any public comment yet?
I have not received any comments.
Okay. Would it be possible to compile once, so if we were to move forward with option one, A and B, allowing the currently registered to move forward with a special temporary for one year while we determine how we move forward with this? And then, can you just put back up on the screen what 1B was? It wasn't included with the original.
The time on the last page.
Yeah, it's under possible solutions on the last page. So B is in the interim, the city staff recommend that no new temporary permits be authorized for vehicles exceeding the length requirements as outlined in the AMC. New permits would be defined as autoettes not previously registered to the city of Avalon.
Okay. Is it possible to compile, once this vehicle season has closed, a list of how many of those vehicles there are to determine what the current percentage is of vehicles on the island and look at the number of parking spots lost because of that? And then be able to start moving forward from there with what we do next?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And there's probably, and again, there's probably even more stuff as we think about this and as the community starts that we might want to look at and consider. So, because we haven't really even said that we don't want any 141-inch golf carts. None of us have really said that yet, you know? Or we haven't said we only want 120-inch ones because we still have to consider maybe people that have larger families. So, so those are still big questions to be answered.
And for the parking spots, are we considering like seasonal and rental golf carts and how that plays into that?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Because I know that we're going to gather the data of the loss of parking spots, but are we considering, I know that they park rental golf carts in their own spaces, but you know, during the day when it's busy, are we considering how many golf carts are being used, rental golf carts are being used as well?
Yes. We will try to consider every angle of it. I am concerned, though, and I'd like it noted, that I am concerned about the people that have paid and the golf cart has been ordered from, say, like Catalina Yamaha and those are on order, have been paid for. How are we supposed to deal with those?
Right. So can we, can we have that requirement be that anyone who has already had one on order because we're allowing for temporary permits through this particular registration period?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think. Yeah, like prior to, prior to, prior to February 16th, prior to, you know, whatever date we want to say now, whatever date. Because if I ordered, if I ordered mine a week ago, I don't think that would be right for you to tell me now I can't bring it.
I also don't think it's our responsibility to make sure that they have permits either. So I guess if we're going to say we're going to allow anything on order right now for a temporary permit, there is absolutely no guarantee that they're going to be able to re-permit that golf cart when it comes around next year. So I just want that to be very clear.
Absolutely.
And the, and the other.
It's at your own risk that you want to move forward with the purchase of an oversized vehicle.
And the other thing on that, Cindy, is that if they think that they should have an oversized vehicle, they can always make the case to their hearing officer. they can always make the case to their hearing officer to keep that, to keep that size vehicle. So there is no guarantee that they're going to be able to keep it.
I agree, yeah. Well, and to be, to, to ask the question as well, is there not a way that we can require Avalon Freight Services to have to not allow vehicles over the permit size?
You know what, we went there, we went there when Joe.
I remember we looked at this, um, in a, in a previous council grouping, um, and it is not the responsibility of the Avalon Freight Service to determine, you know, what is, what is coming over or to police that in any way. It is under their tariff, somebody brings them freight, they haul the freight, but they are not in a position to, um, be in charge or responsible or even be measuring vehicles or any of that nature. That is, that is not their role.
Yeah.
Can signage be placed on, at the freight line on behalf of the city for that information? So that there's at least signage there that says that if you bring a vehicle over, you may potentially be sending it back because it's not legal?
I, I think that's a given, if you're going to bring a vehicle over, you, you know.
You're going to have to get it permitted, so you're going to have to find out what the parameters are.
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to help out people to say, if you are not wise enough to check beforehand, at least there's a check right before you literally get it on the barge to come over, before you waste that money in getting a vehicle over here and then have to send it back.
I mean, if anything, it could be the question, have you checked with the City of Avalon or what the regulations are on bringing vehicles and golf carts to the island? And give our phone number, something that people, instead of giving them all the rules and regs to.
Right.
But.
We will have it on the website as well, right?
What's that? What's that, Yuzenya?
We'll have that on the website too, though, if people do want to go check.
Oh, yeah, all of our codes are, our ordinances are on there.
Whatever the council determines tonight, we will make sure that it gets posted in the paper for a few weeks, all the way through vehicle season, as well as on our website and Channel 3.
Denise, is it possible to have the sticker for those special temporary permits be a separate color so that when people go to, if in case someone tries to resell it, they're not able to because of that color sticker?
Yes, right now, it is, it's a difference, because it's not a real sticker and there's like a dot on it or something also that, um, that notifies code and stuff, that it's just a temporary.
Okay, so it looks like we're going with option one? A and B, okay, all right. That's the direction, do we need to vote on that or just? Everybody's shaking.
I would like to check, Scott, is there any legal ramifications? And is there anything we need to consider?
No, as long as people have given notice that this is a temporary permit, that they're not in compliance with the municipal code and that they may be required to take the boat off the island, I mean, take the boat, the golf cart off the island.
And should we or could we put in something about resale, yes or no? Scott?
Um, if that's your, if that's your, your determination, that we could put that in the permit language, the language that people get, and you could also notify the people that have these that they're not allowed to resell them, because it's in violation of the municipal code.
What do you think, counsel? Okay.
Scott, do we have to do any kind of ordinance change for this?
No, we don't, it's just a matter of you exercising your police power to, you know, to, to enforce your ordinance.
Great, okay.
I would like to have a clear vote on, 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 on what, you know, the motion is, just rather than nods on the head.
Is there a motion to, um, go with option one, A and B?
I'll make a motion to go with option one, A and B.
And do we want to include resale? And no resale?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
And the resale would be not just to the rental agencies, but to residents also?
Correct.
And then my other thing, I just want clarification, am I reaching out then to Yamaha, Buffalo Motor, whoever else is selling new golf carts? And telling them that if, if they've been ordered, to make sure that the people that are purchasing them knows that it's at their risk, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Cindy, why do you have that, why do you smile?
Is there a date, is, is there a date that this motion takes effect? For the cars that are on the island or maybe in transit?
I think maybe today's the day. Because if they ordered it yesterday, it's effective today? Team, what do you think?
Effective for vehicles where they have proof of purchase today.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this news ought to spread.
Michael, is that fine with your motion? Yes.
And this ought to spread by like wildfire, and I hope vacation rental plate people, and those who rent Hamilton Cove condos and all of that are talking to all of those folks as well. We're not going to send a letter out to each of the homeowners individually telling them this information, they will need to get involved. Okay, it's been moved, and a second?
Wait, and do we have any, um, oh, comments, Michael?
Michael?
I'm just doing a refresh, no, I have not received any comments.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes. Item number seven.
And then, just a question really quick, Denise. Is it possible to put the vehicle code back on the agenda to review as well? And we could, as we can, and get an update on where we are with the vehicle study? If one has not happened, happened, is going to happen?
Yes, please.
The entire vehicle code or certain sections, I'm not, please clarify.
Sorry, the autoet with respect to length and width of autoettes in the vehicle code.
We will be bringing it back, are you asking by a certain time? I can't say, just because registration stops on April 1st. We have stragglers that are registering their vehicles all the way till a year later.
Anytime is fine, but just in time this year would be preferred.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, item number seven is the first reading of an ordinance that amends the existing accessory dwelling unit regulations that we have. Uh, just for some very brief background, um, last year in January, actually January 1st of 2020, a series of new state laws impacting accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, which I'll also refer to as ADUs and JADUs, took effect. The new ADU laws contained a number of significant increases in the circumstances under which the city must ministerially approve ADUs. So doing that administratively, rather than having to go to the Planning Commission. Uh, this was actually addressed last year by both the Planning Commission in late January of 2020, and then by the city council in early February of 2020. Uh, we had passed a ADU law that kind of reflected the state's requirements. Um, since then, however, uh, the California Legislature has tweaked their state statute and the agency that's responsible for compliance with the state law, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, they issued their own ADU handbook interpreting relevant state statutes as of last September. Uh, and so because of those recent legislative changes, as well as some new interpretations by the HCD, uh, we have, um, discussed this at the Planning Commission to make some very minor iterative changes to our existing ADU and JADU regulations. These are very minor edits to that. Uh, and essentially what we've got here before you is an ordinance that looks at two things. Uh, the first one is some edits to ensure compliance with the state authorities. There's four changes that fall under this category. And then we've got some edits for clarification purposes or practical considerations. And there's again, four changes there as well. Uh, we did supply, uh, earlier today, uh, council with the redline version of the ordinance. The ordinance that was attached is the complete ordinance in the packet, uh, but they didn't necessarily mark out what was actually changed. So I'm going to go over those, uh, just for the public's edification. Um, so under the edits to ensure compliance with state authorities, those four, um, two of those four were regarding, uh, the approval section, which is nine dash five point six oh four. Uh, the changes on the first one come under A1 of that statute. And really, the, the biggest change here is previously the language stated on converted, single-family lots that only one ADU or JADU within the lot of the proposed or existing family dwelling on it. Uh, that word or has been eliminated and has now been changed to and. Um, so that was a very minor, but pretty important change that we needed to make. The second one is regarding building permits for only qualifying ADUs that are attached on a multifamily lot. State law allows peak height above grade at 16 feet or less, and the 800-foot square limit, square footage limitation was removed since it applies, it applies in some different sections, um, in different instances in that. So that 800-square-foot limitation was removed and this, uh, the new, uh, peak height above grade at 16 feet or less was then added. Uh, the other two requirements are under the section specific ADU requirements. This is nine dash five point six oh six. And we've got two here, one is on A1, and then the other one is on A. For A1, we have, uh, changed some of the language stating that there's a two-bedroom maximum on a attached ADU. That's been now removed in light of the HCD guidance that such language could be construed as a discriminatory practice toward protected classes such as familial status. So, uh, the existing square footage limitations will remain, but the requirement regarding the two-bedroom maximum was removed. The next change was on, uh, really making clear that a four-foot side and rear setback applies to ADUs requiring an ADU permit in addition to qualifying ADUs. That must be ministerially approved with only a building permit. Uh, in consultation with BBNK, uh, they are recommending that the same location and to the same dimensions as the existing structure, so that the city can regulate front yard setbacks in line with the HCD. Guidance language was added to indicate that the ADU must conform to that 15-foot yard setback. However, the city can pick its own length for front yard setbacks, provided it's articulated within the ordinance. Uh, so right now, we've got a 15-foot recommendation that's listed in there. Uh, the next four edits are really on the clarification, um, side of things. Two, or one of these is under the general ADU or ADU, JADU requirements. The section nine dash five point six oh five eight three has been revised to reflect the location limits on ADUs and specifically, language was added to make clear that ADU or JADU requires an indication of sufficient water from the city's provider if necessary. Uh, so there was a lot of discussion around that. Um, and, uh, anything that is built here is subjected to water allocation. So, um, that was just made a little bit more clear, it was not added in there prior to that. The next one is, uh, the next three changes are on the specific ADU requirements. This is nine dash five point six oh six, D, H, and, uh, in, just in general. Uh, on the first one, the city's existing language on height for ADUs requiring the ADU permit, as opposed to just a building permit, is consistent with the state law. However, the city can remove language codifying the right to build two-story ADUs and instead more generally limit ADUs to the 16-foot at grade. So that was, uh, the first change. The second change is in regards to language on the historical protections. This has been amended now to cite, uh, the national standards applicable to real property on the California Register of Historical Resources. And language has been adopted and approved by HCD for a number of other local agencies. So this is just one of those clarification languages. Um, and then the last one is clarification to make clear proportionate impact in utility fees that they apply to all ADUs or JADUs. And the formula to determine that proportionate fee has been corrected to ensure that we are accurate in our calculations. So, uh, with that, um, staff is recommending that the council, uh, approve or introduce and waive all further readings of this ordinance, amending Article 6 of Chapter 5 of Title IX, the planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code and ensuring accessory dwelling units in Avalon conform with the recent state guidance and provide greater clarity to the public. Uh, with that, that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
I have a question on parking. Why is it required that they have a parking spot? On parking number one, generally, one off-street parking space is required for each ADU. When these lots are so small anyway, and why is it required?
I was under the impression that ADUs were not allowed golf carts.
Yeah.
Uh, the way that it reads and says, uh, under the parking section, and remember, uh, that is not a section that is, um, being proposed for revisions. Uh, the exceptions are no parking under subsection nine five six oh six F above is required in the following situations. ADU is located within a one-half mile walking distance of public transit. The ADU is located within an architecturally and historically significant historic district. The ADU is part of a proposed or existing primary residence or an accessory structure. Um, when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the ADU and when there is an established car-share vehicle stopped located within one block of the ADU. Uh, so there are, um, a number of, uh, instances where parking is, uh, may not be provided.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't read that closely, I apologize. And then the other thing, I just really have a problem with the water allocations. And we have a, I'm just really frustrated with Southern California Edison when we have a housing, um, problem that these little teeny ADUs that wouldn't use much water, you know, it's a mom and pop or maybe just a grandma or whoever's living in there. That is just ridiculous that they haven't allowed any water allocations for those. That's my rant, Michael. Okay, staff, or council, with your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending Article 6 of Chapter 5 of Title IX, planning and zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code to ensure accessory dwelling units in Avalon conform with recent state guidance and provide greater clarity to the public.
A second?
Second.
Moved in second, any comments, uh, from the audience, Michael?
I have not received any comments.
Okay, um, call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
The last item in general business this evening is the appointment of a SCAG representative at the General Assembly. Uh, currently, the mayor is our delegate for, or she's the appointee person, not first, that represents us on the SCAG board. And on May 6th, they will be having their, uh, conference in General, General Assembly via phone and Zoom. And we are asking that the mayor, via our resolution, be appointed as the voting delegate, but I need an additional member as an alternate in case that something, mayor gets sick. And that's why.
I would be willing to be an alternate.
That's all good with me, Yuzenya, um, Michael, Lisa? Okay, all right.
And do we need to make a motion on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Please, it's my.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution, appoint Mayor NH Marshall, the City of Avalon voting delegate, and appoint Cindy Magugan-Cassidy as, as a city council as the alternate delegate for the annual Southern California Association of Government, Regional Conference, and General Assembly in May 2021.
A second? Moved in seconds, further discussion? Call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
That's it for general business.
Okay. If there's no further business, minutes with the mayors tomorrow at four o'clock, and anything, anybody else want to say before we sign off and say goodnight to Tony?
Wait, wait, speaking of Tony, Tony, if you're watching, make an appointment to get your commuter subsidy card. They'll wait at the door and they will meet you. Just wanted to let you know because you asked me that question earlier today. Thanks.
Oh, great, okey-dokey. Well, and Lisa, we're going, I'm going to call you after this phone call, after the council meeting, okay? All righty, no further business, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony. Good night, everybody.
Good night.